Okay, it's 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the Tiffin City Council meeting of Monday, May 15, 2023, to order. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Thacker.
Thank you. Members of council, we arrive as individuals with unique ideas and experiences, but all with the desire to fulfill the needs of others. I ask that you use reason, wisdom, and empathy in your decisions today to take into account the implications your decisions will have now and in the future. We should all plant an acorn, even though we may not live to hear the wind rush through its leaves or the joyous laughter of children playing in the comfort of its shade. We plant the seed for the benefit of future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with this love of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Thacker.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Councilmember Leopard.
Here.
Councilmember Perry.
Here.
Councilmembers Reesner.
Here.
And Councilmember Sparr.
Here.
Thank you. Let the record show that all seven members of council are present. Minutes from May 1, 2023, regular and committee of the whole meetings were distributed. Are there any corrections, questions, deletions? Minutes will stand approved as presented. We are now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilmember Reesner.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Long Community Planning, Councilmember Leopard.
Thank you. Long Community Planning Committee meeting was held May 1, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the City Council chambers. Attending were committee members Steve Leopard, Dan Perry, and Vicki Wilkins; Mayor Yanantuno, Director of Law, Brian Howard; City Administrator Nick Dutrow; Director of Communications, Liz Crook; and Councilmember Cheyenne Thacker. Leopard stated that the purpose of the meeting was to discuss mayor's request for legislation 23-26, TMAC Community Placing Grants and Artistic Development Grant. City Administrator Dutro stated that TMAC, Tiff Municipal Arts Commission, has requested the City Council pass legislation in order to fund the community placemaking and artistic development. The Community Placemaking Grant supports activities involving dance, theater, music, visual arts, and literature, as well as the creation of public art and commissioning fees. The Artistic Developing Grant is aimed at covering professional development expenses for artists at any stage in their career while they are residing or attending school within the city. City Administrator Dutro stated that TMAC will use funds appropriated by Tiff and City Council for the grant programs and will only be used for a public purpose. TMAC is a not-for-profit organization. TMAC Community Placemaking Grants range from $500 to $3,000 and are geared towards individuals, independent artists, rather than established organizations. The TMAC Artistic Development Grant has a range of $250 to $1,500 and is aimed at covering professional development experiences and materials for artists at any stage in their career. Wow. While attending school in the city of Tiffen. The committee reviewed the grant program outlined, which included eligible and ineligible activities, events, and costs, and application processes, and grant conditions. Councilmember Perry introduced a motion, except the RFL as presented. The motion was seconded by Councilmember Wilkins and passed by a vote three to zero. No other further business. The meeting adjourned at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Questions for Councilmember Leopard? Thank you. Materials and equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No, not at this time, Madam President.
Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilmember Perry.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Recreation and Public Property, Councilmember Wilkins.
No report, Madam President.
And Street Sidewalks and Sewers, Councilmember Thacker.
Yes, thank you. A Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee meeting was held May 1, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the Tiffin City Hall Council Chambers. Attending were committee members Cheyenne Thacker, Kenneth Jones, Kevin Reesner, Daniel Perry, and Stephen Leopard, along with council members Vicki Wilkins and John Sparr, City Law Director Brent Howard, Mayor Don Yanantuno, City Administrator Nick Dutro, Elizabeth Crook, and Chief Polly. Thacker called the meeting to order. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss utility vehicle and golf cart usage on city streets and any other business presented. Jones and Perry were in favor of rear-facing passengers. Leopard was in favor of rear-facing passengers after seeing Bob Shipe's golf cart that had a handlebar and bumper. Leopard was in favor of several safety features such as seat belts, LED lights, rearview mirror, and did not want any three-wheel golf carts. Wilkins asked if the LED lights would be expensive. Leopard thought it wouldn't be too cost prohibitive for golf cart owners. Chief Polly revised the inspection sheet and shared it with the committee. The committee was split on bumpers and the definition of a bumper and chose to finish the conversation later that evening during the regular meeting under other business. With no further business, the committee adjourned at 6:44 PM.
Thank you. Questions for Councilmember Thacker? Thank you. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilmember Sparr.
Nothing at this time, Madam President.
Does anyone see the need to schedule a committee of the whole meeting? Okay, we are now under reports of the officers. Her Honor, Mayor Don Yanantuno.
Thank you, Madam President. I have to start out with two proclamations. And the first one, I'll do the National Historic Preservation. We have Mary Lewis here with us this evening. Whereas historic preservation is inherently economically, environmentally, and socially friendly and socially sustainable, fostering a culture of reuse and maximizing the life cycle of all resources through conservation; and whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for promoting sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, promoting tourism, and maintaining community character; whereas historic preservation can be the center of a community discussion, uniting residents behind an important cause; whereas it is important to acknowledge and celebrate the benefit of history, architecture, and archaeology to our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped the city; therefore, be it resolved, I, Don M. Yanantuno, Mayor of the City of Tiffen, do hereby proclaim May 2023 in the City of Tiffen as National Historic Preservation Month on this 15th day of May in the year of our Lord 2023. And so, Mary, I'd like to give you this.
I didn't come prepared to say anything, other than thank you, but I've been with Tiffen Historic Trust since the very beginning, 1976, and we've done some really, seen some really great things happen in Tiffen, quite a bit happening downtown because of the facade grants and so on, but I'm just hoping that we can start to work possibly on neighborhoods. We have four historic districts. Maybe you don't know that, but we do. Downtown is one of them, but there are three others, and we should, Tiffen should be very proud of what we have here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to take a picture? Did you want to take a picture? Love that. Lovely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
with us this evening. Chief Chapel is on vacation. And so, whereas emergency medical technicians are called into situations that may, many could never fathom, they are called to aid those that are having their worst day when no one else can help. And whereas members of the Tiffen Fire Rescue Division are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week; and whereas emergency medical services consist of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, dispatchers, firefighters, police, educators, nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and out-of-hospital medical providers; and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills; and whereas 2023 EMS Week in Tiffen remembers fallen firefighter Sean Tyler, who served 12 years dedicated to the profession and was an exemplary paramedic; and whereas Sean's caring nature extended beyond the fire services, as he also worked as an RN in the Emergency Department of Mercy Tiffen and Mercy Willard, where he could bring a smile to a patient's face during their worst moments while providing the care they deserved; and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers and the memory of Sean Tyler, who will forever be remembered for his dedication to his family, community, brother and sister firefighters and nurses. Now, therefore be it resolved, I, Don M. Yanantuno, Mayor of the City of Tiffen, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through the 27, 2023, in the City of Tiffen as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the EMS Strong theme, where emergency care begins, I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities while keeping the memory of Sean Tyler close on this 15th day of May in the year of our Lord 2023.
Deputy Chief.
Deputy Chief, can I take a picture?
I suppose. You want me to talk first? All right, just because I know he's really far away and may not hear me, I promise this will not be long as Chief Chapel speaks.
And I think we need to state that Deputy Chief Holman wrote much of that proclamation himself. So thank you for that.
So again, the EMS, National EMS Week, this month is May 21 through the 27. We are going to be holding an open house from 1:00 to 4:00 next, on Sunday, the 21st. If anybody wants to come out, we're going to be teaching hands-only CPR. Actually, the crew that's on duty today will be there, and anybody that wants to come out, you know, we'll teach you hands-only CPR. It only takes about five minutes. We'll have some nice giveaways for the kids, some displays and stuff, and if anybody wants to just tour the station, look at some trucks, you know, barring any major events, the doors should be open by all means, and we'll be there and happy to have anybody in. So again, thank you for this, Mayor, and allowing me to come today, and I'll let you get back on your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you do. Very proud of the fact that our firefighters are also dual-trained paramedics, and that's not typical in all cities. And so, I'm very proud of that, that you guys are heavily trained. It doesn't matter which one of you shows up at the door, you're there to save somebody's life, and you can all do it. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a special guest here this evening. Mircha Andrew is the Executive Director of the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board of Seneca, Ottawa, Sandusky, and Wyandotte Counties to give us an update on the One Ohio Recovery Foundation. Mircha.
I do, I do believe I have a little PowerPoint. Again, my name is Mircha Andrew. I represent the Mental Health Recovery Service Board, cover four counties, Seneca, Ottawa, Sandusky, and Wyandotte. Used to be a three-county board, but in 2021, we merged with Ottawa County as well. I'll take a few minutes, I'll be short, to talk about the One Ohio Recovery Foundation. This is the foundation that handles the opioid litigation for the state of Ohio. And I'll go a little bit in a history, so, which actually I have a few slides talking about it, but again, all the opioid litigation for all 50 states was settled around the year and a half ago. One Ohio Recovery Foundation was formed here in the state of Ohio to handle a portion of their funds, which I will explain here a little bit. The funds are obviously restricted to opiate treatment, prevention, or recovery support The process started in 2018, as you can see on the screen, with One Ohio MOU, which was established. Director Howard, I did bring a MOU from Columbus for you, so I want to make sure I give this to you before I leave. But really, the MOU states about what services or programs can the funds be used for. I know the City of Tiffen is receiving actually a portion of the funds now and what it is for the next 17 years. In 2021 is actually last year, sorry, in 2022, last year is when we had, our first regional meeting was in May, so we just celebrated one year of the One Ohio Recovery Foundation. And this opioid settlement for the state of Ohio will be over $800 million that will distribute, will be distributed to Ohio communities over a 17, 18-year period. The funds are divvied up in three main categories. 55% is the One Ohio Recovery Foundation Board, which I'm part of, and I'm going to go into more details. 30% go to local government. In Seneca County, City of Tiffen is receiving funds, City of Ostoria, and the county. So far, according to our records, the City of Tiffen receive a little bit under $14,000 in opioid litigation funds. Seneca County, a little bit over $84,000 so far. And these funds are supposed to come at least once a year again for the next 17 years. 15% of the funds stays with the state of Ohio. That is, that is taken right from the top, from the state of Ohio, and 55% again goes to the One Ohio Recovery Foundation, which I am the representative for Seneca County and for our region, the state level. The foundation is comprised of 29 board members across the state. There are 19 regions. I represent Region 17. Seneca County is in the same region with eight, with seven other counties, sorry. Ottawa, Sandusky, Seneca, Wyandotte, Craftord, Hancock Wood, and Hardin Counties is my region, and I was appointed last year to represent these eight counties. The statewide board, we meet once a month down in Columbus, again, trying to get this foundation off the ground. A few of the pointees were made by the governor or by Attorney General or the legislators, the Ohio General Assembly. My term is two years. Some, some other members are a three-year term or one-year term, and we can renew our terms after that. Here is a picture of the regions across Ohio. You can see Region 17, where Seneca County is part of. Very grateful for my organization, all of our four counties are in the same region. So again, for my public organization, it is really nice to have all four counties in the same region. Obviously, here I have a list of the board members, but I do want to go a little bit into details, talking about what we are doing down in Columbus when it comes to the One Ohio Recovery Foundation. And two important things that I will like to mention public. Early on, there were two lawsuits filed against the foundation. So Hard Reduction Ohio, a nonprofit organization, filed one lawsuit in Franklin County Common Police Court in violation of the Public Meeting Act, claiming that we didn't have meetings according to the Ohio law, and we didn't provide proper notice or had meetings in in secret. The second lawsuit was filed in Ohio Supreme Court. It was regarding public records. Early on, there was a few public records made of us board members, and I believe maybe the people who made the records didn't receive quite everything they wanted, and the lawsuit was filed in Ohio Supreme Court. It's my understanding, all public record violations has to be filed in the Supreme Court. An update again is, last week, the Supreme Court just ruled, actually, on this case was last week, and, and the Supreme Court did rule that the One Ohio Recovery Foundation has to provide all of its records as public documents. So just so you guys are aware, some of us on the Recovery Foundation are public employees like myself, but we do have some private citizens, people that are maybe retired or people that work in private business, and I think that is where was the glitch. Some of them felt like this is supposed to be a nonprofit foundation, and I'm not going to make my public, my records public. Well, the Supreme Court ruled that even if you are a private employee or even retired and you sit on this foundation, even if it's not a state foundation, those records are still public. So pretty interesting ruling by the Supreme Court. The, the One Regarding Public Meetings Act is still ongoing, but again, I wanted to make sure I do mention those today in the meeting. Here again, you can see, I do have a graph with the opioid lawsuit, again, 33%, 30% stays in the local government. That's the portion the City of Tiffen gets. 55% is what I'm part of for the foundation, and 50% stay with the state of Ohio. We are in the middle of developing a process for the grants, where local, private, or governmental entities can apply for some of these funds. We are hoping to have the requests available late this year, and we are hoping the funding to roll out to the communities early next year. We do have a formula. Our region is supposed to receive around a little, over $1.6 million as the first payment, again, early next year to be distributed throughout the region. Our region came out with a formula. Seneca County is looking over, a little bit over $200,000 will be their portion. If, if an agency in Seneca County wants to partner with the agency in Sandusky County, we can actually do that, kind of put the money together and merge for one project. Actually, they do recommend that we have projects that cross county lines. They want to see more regional projects versus just single county projects. So again, we'll open the application up to everybody. I'm sure we have public announcements. We are not ready yet, but we'll probably be ready this fall. The funds can be used, and this is for everybody. So even for the City of Tiffen, when the funds come to your account, the funds have to be used for one of these purposes. I believe I did talk with somebody in the city around six months ago, I believe, when you guys received the first payment, asked some questions, hey, can we use the funding for this? The answer was yes, but, but I believe you guys already utilized some of the funds. So keep in mind, in, in this MOU, which I will leave a copy with me, it states exactly the purposes you can use the funds for. So the City of Tiffen cannot use these funds, for example, and use for paving roads. It has to be used for these specific purposes that again go back to the drug epidemic that we, we faced and continue to face. This is just a little bit mentioning about the, the projects I will be funding. We are, we are very early into the process. We are not there yet. I think we want, we all want the, the funds to hit our communities sooner. Did not yet. It's a pretty lengthy process, and obviously, the two lawsuits kind of slow us down. We have a little timeline. We start this, as I said, May of, of 2022 was our first public meeting. We continue to meet monthly. Early January of this year, we actually submitted a 501(c)(3) application with IRS to, to start the foundation. Actually, the Ohio AG sent the foundation $1 million for, for the startup cost, so we are able to operate. We do have an interim executive director right now. We are in a process to select a permanent executive director. Actually, we have to submit three names to the, to the governor to then select the, the executive director of the foundation. That job was posted and is now closed. So I think I went pretty fast. I tried to make sure I stay under 10 minutes. If you have any updates, again, I am your person for the region, your contact person. Obviously, Nick, Nick has my contact information if you guys have any questions about the funds, but I want to make sure I get out to, to public meetings and inform the people about these funds coming back to, to Tiffen and Seneca County. Do you guys have any questions?
I'm sorry, Law Director.
Yeah, Mircha, if I could, there, you mentioned the two buckets, if you will, of money that the, the city could receive. One is the direct payments. That's the 30% to local governments. At one time, over a year ago, there was an estimate that, that we might receive over $140,000. Is that still the, the rough estimate? Is that the over 17-years payments?
That is over 17-years payments, correct.
And that is the approximate amount that we may receive?
Correct, which, which I think you guys might receive a little bit higher than that, but that continues to be the amount, yes.
And why is it over a 17-year period?
That is how the MOU was developed. I think they wanted to stress this, this out over, over a period of time. They wanted to see the services ongoing versus a one-time funding, and we are done. Also, the foundation has, which will not impact the city funds that, that you are getting directly, but the foundation has the ability to do investments. So actually, not all the money they will receive, the 55%, we have to reinvest back in the community. Some we can actually put in some investment funds, which by the way, we did last month, and last month, the foundation made $195,000 in interest in one month, which is good. Again, those funds will, will come back to the Ohio community. So we actually have that ability to, to put some money aside for investments.
Another question. As we think about the application for funding from the foundation that you, you mentioned will start to go live this next year, is there any value in working with other political subdivisions within our county to apply for and seek, seek funding as a way to, I guess, compete and, and receive money for projects?
Absolutely. I think we will actually encourage that to happen. Again, keep in mind, you're going to have eight counties in the region that, that agencies can apply, again, can be political subdivisions or private entities. I am assuming a lot of treatment agencies or prevention agencies will apply for these funds. Agencies that are actually boots on the ground right now, trying to do the help, trying to provide help. Also, one other thing that I do want to mention, these applications will come to the region to be approved. Only after the regions approve them, they go to the state level for funding. So you cannot bypass the region. And in the region, we have eight, eight members, one per county. Again, I represent Seneca County in the region, but we have eight voting members, so we have to be a majority of vote of those eight for any projects to be approved.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Our department head reports continue tonight. Our eighth and final report. Poor Kevin's had to wait all this time. Kevin, who uses our superintendent water treatment facility. Last but certainly not least, here's Kevin.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, City Administrator, and Council for allowing me to come here tonight. So yeah, I've been the superintendent at the wastewater plant for almost 12 years now, with the city for 19. This is kind of a, this is just an overview of our current staff. We did have one retiree this year. Gary Guido left. He was our plant mechanic. He had been with the city for 26 years, and one of our plant operators, Kerry Correll, took his position as mechanic, and now we have a new hire, Isaiah Sheed. He's been there for a couple months now. And he's so far, so good. He's working out really well. And one other thing I wanted to mention, too, like, if you, if you look around at other plants, we're really lucky to have, like, we have, this is actually, Dan Kuhn has a Class III operator license as well, and I have a Class III, and so does Nick Boar, who just recently got his, and that's really rare for that many people to have a Class III at one plant, and then everyone else besides Isaiah has a, at least a one, and they're working on, Isaiah's going to be working on getting his as well, so we got a really good staff out there. So I kind of wanted to, because there are, you know, some new council people within the last year, I kind of wanted to just go through briefly the history of the wastewater plant, just kind of explain how we got where we're at. So the, they first started talking about the plant in 1936, and it took about 19 years before it actually and it took about 19 years before it actually was built. And when it was, when it was built, this is a picture of it. It was basically just primary treatment, screening and primary treatment and then to the river. And the first upgrade from there was done in 1968 where they added two digesters and secondary treatment and aeration treatment, which gave you the first part of the biological side for further purification of the water. And we also, they also added chlorine for disinfection and then sodium thiosulfate for, to get rid of the chlorine before it was discharged into the river. And then the next upgrade wasn't for another 20 years where they added a third digester and then a storm tank, which allowed the plant to take more than 4 million gallons. Whenever it would go over the 4 million, the excess water up to about 15 million was able to be given at least primary treatment and then discharged to the river after being disinfected as well. And then they added a third digester. So that kind of brings us to this last, these last couple of upgrades. The revised long-term control plan, when that came out, the long-term control plan was developed to eliminate the combined sewer overflow events down to four events per year, which is, so we're separating the city's combined sewer lines. And that was kind of done in a three-phase approach as far as the wastewater plant goes. So the initial upgrade was done in 2015 where we updated our screening and our aeration system, which allowed us to filter out a lot more of the solids that come in the plant that caused issues downstream from that. And then the aeration system was upgraded, which allowed us for biological phosphorus removal instead of just chemical, which is what we had been for a long time. And then the second phase, which was done in '21, it took the plant from a 4 million gallon per day treatment capacity to 13 million gallons. And that's where we're at right now. And then the next phase of the plan is to build the 10 and a half million gallon EQ basin. And this, these are some of the pictures from 2015. On the left, you can see our old bar screens where the gaps between them were 3/4 inch to an inch. So it allowed a lot more solids to come through the plant. And the new screens are a quarter inch apart. So they're a lot more effective. It's really saved us a lot of maintenance on the downstream equipment. And then these are, this is a picture of one of our aeration tanks. In the past, on the left side, you can see the top picture shows the tank empty. And those were, we had coarse bubble diffusers in the bottom of those tanks. And you can see how rough the water is and turbulent is on top, on the bottom picture on the left side. And that was because it was basically just blowing big bubbles into the tank. And then when we, once we upgraded to these tube diffusers on the right side, you can see the top where we're aerating, how it's just, it's just a little bit of a foamy substance on top. And that's a lot more fine bubbles, which allows for a lot better oxygen transfer. Part of that upgrade, we also upgraded one of our blowers along with the aeration system. And that took our electric bill that was averaging $16,000 a month down to $10,000 a month. In this picture, so this is when the '21 upgrade. This is the plant after the 2021 upgrade. Everything highlighted in green is new from the '21 project. Several of the smaller buildings are electrical. And there's an anaerobic tank, another secondary clarifier. And then I'm kind of going to go through some of these pictures that'll highlight some of those. So this is our, on the left is our initial splitter box. And that is, once the water comes in the plant, it's going through our raw pumps and being lifted up to this tank. And that tank is about three times higher than it used to be in elevation. Because when the plant was, the way it was designed before, we had to pump the water up with the raw pumps. And then it would go gravity through half of the plant and then have to be pumped up again. But by raising the elevation of the splitter box and the primary clarifiers on the right, we were able to go gravity from the raw pumps throughout the plant, which saved us a lot of money and a lot of hassle because those secondary lift pumps were a big maintenance issue in the past. This is our anaerobic tank. This treatment comes right after our primary clarifiers. And this, this tank was what allowed us to really achieve our biological phosphorus removal. And we still use ferris chloride to get rid of our phosphorus to meet our MPDS requirements. But we've been using about 30% less ferris chloride, which has saved us about $5,000 a year, $5,000 to $6,000 a year so far. We're hoping to kind of get, make that a little bit better, but we'll see. Oops, how do you go back on this? Thank you. So the blower on the left is the blower we added in 2015. It was a little bit oversized for what we really needed on a regular basis. It's good for high-flow treatment. So in the '21 project, we replaced one of our other blowers with a small, high-efficiency blower, similar to the one that was replaced in '15. And that, that took our average electric bills down to $7,500 a year, or a month, I'm sorry. So it's like a savings of $102,000 a year from where they were prior to 2015. And this is just a couple of pictures of some of the other new, this is our secondary splitter box. And then the view on the right is just one of the gates that's open. That's the flow going to the, one of the secondary tanks. You can kind of see how dark it is and that's, so we use our bugs in our secondary part of our plant for solids removal. So the first part of the plant is basically just slowing the flow down, letting the solids settle out. Then, once you get past these, the heavier solids settling out, you need to use basically microbiological activity to gather the solids and help them settle out. The bugs kind of eat the solids, cling together and then they settle out of the water. So we kind of keep, keep that at a certain suspended solids content of that mixed liquor is actually what it's called. But you'll see, and then the, so this is the secondary tanks. That's where that flow is going to. And you can't really see from the picture, but, so the flow comes into the center of the tank where it's a lot darker. And then it works its way to the outside and then overflows to the weirs and goes to the final treatment process. But this is another one of our new buildings. We have our RAS pumps and our ferris storage building. The ferris tanks are on the right. Like I said, that's what we use for phosphorus removal. I think I have a picture of the pumps. Yeah, so we also, in the '21 project, the four pumps on the left are four raw pumps and then the RAS pumps, which are the return activated sludge pumps. That's what pumps off the bottom of the four secondary tanks. And then we also, part of that '21 project, we switched from chlorine disinfection to UV. So that's, those are a picture of, the left one is the UV lights that are out of the channel. And then the one on the right is when they're down in the channel. And they've, they've really been nice because we've been able to eliminate chlorine and sodium thiosulfate. And the maintenance on them has been relatively low. And like I said, we were spending probably about $35,000 a year between chlorine and sodium thiosulfate. So we've eliminated that. And the dangers of chlorine, obviously, too, are gone, so. And then this is our, after it goes through the UV, it goes into this channel on the left, which we can add oxygen to it if we need to, which helps us meet our DO requirements and our MPDS permit. And then the picture on the right is just where the water flows out into the river. This is just, the one on the right is our new generator. Before, we had a generator where it would only run about half of the plant. And if we had a power outage, we would get an alarm call and have to come in and manually transfer it over. And then someone would have to stay there until the power would come back on and kind of watch the generator because it was like a 50s generator. And, but this one automatically transfers within 15 seconds of a power outage. And then once it, once it sees stable power for 30 minutes, it'll, it'll transfer back and we can run the whole plant on that. This is just some of the additional post-upgrade benefits, most of them, which I think, I think I've pretty much mentioned all of them already. And this is just a picture. It should be the other way around, I guess. But the one on the right is the treated wastewater and the raws on the left coming in. Kind of see how much clearer it is. And I mean, if you, I should have had a river sample up here too because our water is cleaner than the river water, I think. And it tests, tests better. So that's kind of where the plan is. Just one of the other things that we do every year at the plant is our bio solids application. So our digesters treat our solids and then we put them into a lagoon. And then our guys have CDLs where they haul the sludge out into the fields. And we have EPA-approved farm fields that we land apply it to every year. We have probably 15 farm fields. They're all local farmers and it's, it works, it's great for us because we get rid of it and they get free fertilizer. And we've been able to get, a lot of the fields are pretty much right on the same side of town as we are. So we're not driving very far or anything. And one of our big projects for last year was we put a new mixing system in one of our digesters. The guys did it themselves. So I mean, I can only guess what we saved because, you know, whenever you have, hire a company to do anything, it's, I'm guessing it's over $100,000 at least because we had to drain this digester and install all this mixing equipment ourselves and install the new pump. The digester, this digester holds about 430,000 gallons. So this is it clean and with the new equipment installed already. One of the other bigger projects we had was our digester one. We had our roof replaced on there. It was causing a lot of issues because the old roof was allowing water to get back in behind the bricks. And we were having a lot of issues with the mortar joints deteriorating and bricks falling out. So this was kind of the first step into repairing some of our digesters. And we had masons out there at the beginning of this year since this roof was replaced last year. So we're able to get some of the brick fixed now without it getting water behind it since the roof's done. Brush pile, everybody knows we have a brush pile out there. Last year, we took in 13,000 cubic yards of brush. Garza Dirt Works was a new company that we worked with last year. They did the grinding. And it ended up about 4,000, a little over 4,000 cubic yards ground down. And we kept 20% of that to give out to the public. And we also have our compost pile up there. We took in 383 cubic yards of leaves and ended up giving out about 152 cubic, no, 156 cubic yards of leaves as compost. And that, October 1st, every year, we give that away and it's usually gone by the end of the first week. Some of the additional accomplishments from 2022, not going to read through them all, but one thing that we, we do at the plant too is we oversee the Tiffin landfill permit. And that has been something that has taken up a lot of time since we were issued a permit in 2005 from the EPA for surface water. And it's, once a week, one of, at least two of our guys would have to go out there and do sampling and bring the samples back for testing. With the help from administration, we were able to get that down to once a month. And we dropped a lot of the tests out that we had to do. And we were able to drop out almost all of them on a monthly basis that we had to pay for. Like most of the testing, other than twice a year, that's left in our permit is stuff that we can do in-house. I'm not going to read through any of these, I guess. This is just some of our plant data as far as some of the flows that we took through the plant. Like I said, we were, we can treat 13 million gallons a day now as opposed to the old 4 million gallons a day. A lot of these average flows don't look, when you compare them to before the plant, they don't look significant because a lot of that was factored in with the, just the storm flow tank, where we only gave it primary treatment. But if you look at the column on the right, the two columns to the right, the max peak flows, that's where you see the biggest difference. You know, where we're able to treat up to 13 million gallons at a time as opposed to, you know, the most we could push through. The old plant was six and that was only for a very short period of time. Otherwise, we'd be losing solids, so. And I did want to mention, one of the things the city's doing is trying to get people to remove their downspouts. And there's a grant available up to $1,000 for disconnecting them. And I'm the person to contact. So if you do have downspouts that go into the ground, feel free to call my office and I can hook you up with that grant and figure it out if your downspouts are connected into the city sewer. And that is it. Just thought I'd mention the golf cart thing.
Jeez, that Kevin.
For you, Don, so.
Hey Kevin, not to put you on the spot, but there was one stat that you gave me when I did the State of the City that I thought was very impressive. It's like $1,300,000.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's really impressive.
Yeah, I don't think I wrote that number down either. That was the gallons that we treated, I think, for the year. It was, yeah, it was like a billion and a half or something like that. I can't remember honestly.
With no fines or faults or anything?
Yeah, with, with no, no violations from the EPA, so.
That was really impressive. I've been out there several times now and I learned something different every time. The last time Liz and I went out there and they were actually cleaning tanks, which I had not seen that before, where they were actually empty. And we met the new employee, Isaiah, and said he loved the job, so that was good to hear. Got to meet him, but very nice operation out there. You guys do a great job. And so when Councilmember Thacker gets a lot of questions on sewer stuff, it's got a lot to do with Kevin.
Thank you.
Kevin, there was one acronym on your accomplishments, 422. And I'm probably not going to get it right because I didn't write it down right away, but it was like DMRQA. It was like, you guys completed?
Yeah, so our DMRQAs are discharge monitoring reports, quality assurance tests.
Okay.
So those are something that, because we, we run a lot of our lab analysis in-house, the EPA requires you to do it. And so you, you have to order these samples for every test that you run. And so you, you have to order these samples for every test that you run and then with, you don't know the values of them and you have to run them, submit your results, and then you kind of get graded on them and you have to be, be within a certain range or you fail them. And, um, if you, if you fail them, then you have the local EPA coming in, wondering why and.
Sure, that makes sense.
Chris Boar's been our lab guy for probably seven or eight years now and I don't believe he's ever failed one. So he, he does a great job out there with that, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, City Administrator.
Thank you. Just wanted to make a quick, uh, clarification there. As Kevin mentioned, uh, one thing that we've been working on is the Tiffin landfill. For your information, what we're referring to is, uh, Tiffin had a landfill. It's on County Road ninety. Um, it has been since capped and closed. We do not send any of our, any of our refuse to that, that landfill. It's been closed for quite a while. For your information, uh, Rumke, all of our, our trash is typically going to Crawford County, which is where, um, our refuses, uh, is going. Um, they have some other sites as well, but, uh, just for your information, um, as we mentioned the, the landfill and we continue to have meetings, um, concerning how we can continue to, uh, end some of our monitoring, um, and work with the EPA to, uh, to do our due diligence the right way, um, and making sure that, um, that's, that's taken care of and, and not being a burden on the environment, um, while also saving our, our hours for our staff.
Yeah, thanks, Nick. I should have said former landfill.
Councilman Perry.
Just a little fun fact, following up Nick's comment, I used to, uh, I grew up behind that landfill, actually, uh, camping my whole life. So my grandma used to, uh, have her camper back there and it's really, actually really nice, uh, if you go back that lane.
It's beautiful back there. You would not know that that's what was underneath.
Does not sound, yeah. Yeah. Landfill doesn't make it sound very pretty, but it, uh, is actually really gorgeous back there.
It is.
And he's not glowing or anything.
Not yet. A little weird, but.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin, and you're free to go if you so choose.
I might stay around for the golf cart part, but.
Oh, just rub it in, rub it in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Also, um, I have Gary Beatty here from OSS because you know that we're asking you quickly to suspend the three reading rule on this tonight, so he thought it would be a good idea if he maybe came and talked about it and answered any questions you may have. So Gary, if you'd like to come up.
Madam President, Mayor Don, Council, thank you for entertaining me, having me out tonight. Um, I was just with Rumke earlier today in Mansfield where your recycling goes. I got a, I got a tour and take my, my staff out there. We're doing a project on, um, waste audit, or recycling audits. Mayor Don introduced me. My name's Gary Beatty. I'm the Ottawa Sandusky and Seneca County Solid Waste Director. What I wanted to do was go over a quick, I know all of the council read all three hundred and seventy-four pages of the plan, but I'm just going to hit the highlights of it, um, just to refresh some of your memory because that, that can get to be a, a long read and it, and it jumps back and forth between chapters and appendices. Um, my personal favorite program that we do is the, uh, when I first came on about three years ago, that was the first thing that I got to do and I met a young lady. Um, her parents in the hallway before we went out for an, uh, assembly said that ever since she was in kindergarten, she said she was going to win it. Here she is in fifth grade. She won it. Like the next president, right there, right out of our, our local, local crop. But that's my favorite. We also do education for local Kiwanis Lions Clubs, different things like that, adult education. We come out to businesses, we have an educator that talks about sustainable buying, sustainable practices that businesses, nonprofits, um, can do. Uh, our Adopt a Road program, very popular. Everybody's kind of, uh, seen different versions of it, whether it's through the state level, through the county level, uh, where different civic groups get together and, uh, kind of, uh, cordon off their piece of a, a highway or a, a county road and they, uh, keep it clean and they get all of their supplies and different things from us. And then also how they are recognized is they come through us and we put up, we pay for a sign that goes up on the side of the road. Competitive grant program, which we have, uh, we've, since I've been the director, we've, uh, brought back each year thus far, it's been a hundred thousand dollars. We split it. January, there's a round and in June, there's a round. Uh, last June, uh, Seneca County, Tiffin particularly, a lot of agencies, um, Franciscan Earth Literacy Center, St. Francis, um, the Center for Homelessness, all, um, got their grants approved in Tiffin. I think it, it totaled just over thirty-six thousand dollars for grant money from OSS to go to, um, organizations that are in the city of Tiffin. Um, that's a lot of information. I, I want to keep it short. I don't have any slides, but I just wanted, uh, to handle any questions that anybody might have. And I appreciate the, the, um, council on short notice having to, to vote on this. I understand.
Questions? Yes, Councilmember Leopard.
Uh, thank you. When are we gonna get back to, uh, being able to recycle AAAC and D cell batteries?
Those you can recycle, there's certain, um, I can send it out to the council, certain, uh, for-profit organizations or even Rumke probably has it on their webpage. I know Republic Services has it on their webpage where you can send away for it. The reason why that OSS has, has went away from that in the, the recent years is the, um, EPA put out guidance that those batteries are safe to put in your trash. They break down in a landfill. Uh, what, what their, their, their verbiage is, is that not for commercial use. So my, my interpretation of that is a big company that has a bunch of batteries in a fifty-five gallon drum, you shouldn't drop that fifty-five gallon drum in the landfill. Probably all those batteries in one spot probably does something bad. Um, but as far as, um, regular day-to-day, your remote control battery dies, you could toss it in the trash can or you can get a hold of one of the, um, waste haulers, um, and they will send you a bag for a fee and they will get rid of your, your batteries. Essentially, the reason why we went away from it is we were following the guidance of, uh, of, uh, the federal EPA.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Gary, thank you for making the trip in. I, you know, you've had a long day, so appreciate you stopping in.
I've put miles today.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll, once again, read quickly to get through the rest of my report. Updates on Sunday, May seventh, Handle with Care held their first annual event at Meadowbrook Park from one to three. I delivered a proclamation to kick them off and then there was a very entertaining kickball game. Some of our Tiffin police officers participated and two were the team captains. Players of all ages joining the fun. It was a very entertaining game. It was raining all morning, so they played on a basketball court and so there were some really good kicks. And so it was pretty interesting. Uh, on May ninth, our arborist, Nick Moses, John Potiger, along with Liz Crook and I traveled to Waseon, Ohio to attend the twenty-twenty-three Northwest Ohio Tree City USA Award Celebration. We received our forty-second award. On May eleventh, my office hosted all of the third graders from the Tiffin City Schools as they do the third grade Tiffin tour. And Mary Lewis, you'll be happy to know Josiah Hedges resided up here in the middle and I made sure I introduced all the students to him as the founding father and they, we talked about his clothing that he had on and they, they kept asking, who is that guy? And I said, I'm getting there. And so, so they're very interesting. So Josiah made another appearance again. He was up here last Thursday. Also, that day, there was a ribbon cutting at Hedges Boyer Park to celebrate the Wi-Fi hookup out there. Um, upcoming events in May before our next meeting, this Thursday, the eighteenth, is our next Third Thursday event. Yes, we are going to the dogs as it is a barking lot party. If you are interested in buying a K-9 TPD t-shirt with the Kiwanis Club of Seneca County will be there selling them to raise money for the K-9 Officer Project. The farmers markets start this Saturday, the twentieth, and will be located on Madison Street from nine to one every Saturday through October. Our Tiffin Fire Department is, as Deputy Chief Holman said, will be hosting an EMS open house from one to four Sunday to kickoff, the, the twenty-first to kickoff Emergency Medical Services Weekend to honor the memory of Tiffin firefighter, paramedic Sean Tyler. The Memorial Day Parade will be on Monday, May twenty-ninth, starting at ten AM with a service to immediately follow on Frost Parkway. City Hall will be closed that day in honor of our veterans. I would like to also, once again, warn residents that on May thirtieth, the Ella Street Bridge work begins and so it will be closed. Ella Street will be closed through traffic, two through traffic until November, weather cooperating, so it won't be that long. And also the East Perry Street full rebuild begins that day also. One lane will be open to traffic, but expect possible timing delays. And that's expected to go into October. And this week, expect Ella Street to be closed off and on from nine to two. They won't be closed during school hours, but from nine to two in preparation of shutting it down. And I also wanted to mention that yesterday, May fourteenth, starts the kickoff of National Police Week. So that concludes my report. Is there's questions?
Any questions for the mayor? Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Uh, Clerk of Council, Anne Forrest.
No report.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the financial report for the month of April, twenty-twenty-three. Total receipts for the month were four million, three hundred thirteen thousand, four hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Total expenses for the month were three million, seven hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-six cents. The general fund unencumbered balance is five million, three hundred eighty-eight thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars and eight cents. Income tax receipts for April, twenty-twenty-three were one million, seven hundred, one thousand, five hundred four dollars and seventy-nine cents. The total increase in income tax receipts for April, twenty-twenty-three when compared to April, twenty-twenty-two was a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred ten dollars and ninety-four cents. Year-to-date, income tax receipts are down a little bit, but only one point zero seven percent, so we're closing that gap. The point two-five percent portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund Two Fifteen for Public Streets for April was two hundred eight thousand, fifty dollars and eighty cents. The unexpendated balance for all funds is thirty-eight million, two hundred thirty-three thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kathy. Councilmember Reesner.
I move to accept the Finance Director's financial report for ending in April and bank reconciliation.
There is a motion to accept the Finance Director's report and bank reconciliation for the month of April. Is there a second, Councilmember Spar?
I second that motion, Madam President.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, thank you. Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. We are now under written communications.
Thank you. We have mayor's request for legislation number twenty-three dash twenty-seven, the OSS Plan ratification, along with the March third, two thousand and twenty-three letter from the OSS Solid Waste District.
Thank you. Mayor's request for legislation number twenty-three dash twenty-seven is prepared as Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two in tonight's meeting agenda.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F twenty-three dash thirteen to amend the two thousand and twenty-three budget ordinance, twenty-two dash one oh eight, to appropriate funds into the Muni Court probation budget.
Thank you. Finance Director's request for legislation number F twenty-three dash thirteen is prepared as ordinance twenty-three dash thirty-one for tonight's meeting agenda.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F twenty-three dash fourteen to amend the two thousand and twenty-three budget ordinance, twenty-two dash one oh eight, to appropriate funds into the Street Department budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F twenty-three dash fourteen is prepared for tonight as twenty-three dash, uh, excuse me, ordinance twenty-three dash thirty-two.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F twenty-three dash fifteen to amend the two thousand and twenty-three budget ordinance, twenty-two dash one oh eight, to appropriate funds into the capital improvement budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F twenty-three dash fifteen is prepared for tonight as ordinance twenty-three dash thirty-three.
Um, and not on the agenda, but, um, I'm going to read a letter that with regret I received this evening. Um, so it's with deep regret, but great appreciation for the twelve years, um, I've spent working with this council member. Please accept this letter as my resignation as First Ward Councilmember. My resignation effective date will be Friday, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at four thirty PM. It has truly been my pleasure to serve the city of Tiffin for more than nineteen years. During this time, I have made many friendships that will be life lasting, lasting. Sincerely, Stephen K. Leopard.
Uh, that letter will be shredded, I mean, held on file. We are, okay, sorry, go ahead. That concludes our written communications. We are now under oral communications. Um, anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium, sign in and direct their, uh, questions to myself. Seeing none, we are now under motions. Are there any motions this evening? We are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number twenty-three dash seventeen introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving mayor's appointment of John Bing to serve an unexpired term on the Seneca County Board of Health from the effective date of this resolution until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the third reading of Resolution twenty-three dash seventeen. Councilmember Perry.
Just have a question. Um, I've never been, um, in a situation before where I was going to vote no on something that I went through my committee and was introduced by me, so didn't know if I could ask the law director on guidance, do I still?
Yeah, I, I would suggest that, um, the, the council president could ask for a motion for passage by someone. Doesn't have to be you. You introduced the legislation.
Yeah.
But she could entertain a motion from someone else on council.
That's right. Yeah, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion for passage of Resolution twenty-three dash seventeen. Councilmember Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I'll ask for, um, this time I would ask for, uh, the third reading of Resolution number twenty-three seventeen and its passage.
Thank you. There is a motion for passage of Resolution twenty-three dash seventeen. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner.
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Since we're in discussion mode on the resolution for the appointment, again, I mentioned this several weeks ago, I told five of these people out of, and I combined two other city council members along with mine. And again, that sounds like a broken record, but twenty-seven people were not in favor of John Bing's appointment. Eight were in favor. I know this is not a vote, this is an appointment by the mayor, but based on these numbers, and I told five of these people, if these numbers didn't change, I would have to be a no vote on John Bing's appointment, so.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Reesner.
It was stated at the last meeting, uh, by John himself. He said, how do you make a good use of information and be objective? I, I appreciate all the community feedback and, uh, while we're all interdependent, um, we, I actually just represent Ward Three and I, and my position might be a little different if, if I would be maybe council at large, perhaps. Uh, so I, I considered all the factors, but the voices in my ward do hold the most weight. And a few did reach out to me and, and they all supported this appointment. And included in this was the original one that supported him, the mayor, and that holds the very most weight with me, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Perry.
Thank you. Um, obviously, um, you know, if you heard my, uh, report, um, from Labor and Personnel, I don't feel like John Bing's a, the correct appointment for this. Um, I don't think he is a fair representation of Seneca County and all that the concerns of our citizens, uh, hold. Um, I know, I don't think Seneca County is going to be one that's going to enforce a mask mandate and the other counties in the state are not. Uh, it, but as far as COVID goes, I know we definitely don't see eye to eye on that and I feel like majority of, uh, Seneca County residents, um, like I said, I don't think COVID's a huge thing now. I think we're past that, but, uh, when, when he was faced with the question on, uh, if he would enforce the mask mandate again, um, any other answer other than no was unacceptable to me. Um, so I will be voting no on this tonight and, um, I, and I guess that's it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Is it anything new from what you've already discussed?
No.
Okay. I just want to take this to a vote.
We, little bit's new.
Okay, no, go ahead then.
Thank you, Madam President. Sitting here thinking, what kind of message are we sending to the residents of Tiffin? We're, ask them for their input. We ask them to come to meeting. We ask them to sign in, come to the podium and all these people got a hold of three of us and we're not listening to them or, that's what I'm feeling here, so that's what I wanted to add.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins?
No.
Jones?
No.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
No.
Reesner?
Yes.
Spar?
No.
See, fails with a vote of, um, sorry, three to four, thank you. Uh, we will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
No.
Jones?
No.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
No.
Reesner?
Yes.
And Spar?
No.
Uh, Resolution twenty-three dash seventeen fails, uh, with a vote of, is it three to four again, man? Three to four, thank you.
Resolution number twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Resolution to adopt the solid waste management plan for the Ottawa-Sandusky-Seneca Joint Solid Waste Management District and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two. Councilmember Reesner.
I would like, uh, I move to have city council suspend the three reading rule and have immediate passage of Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of Resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two. Is there a second? Councilmember Perry.
Yeah, I'll second, Madam President.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Reesner?
Yes.
And Spar?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero, will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Jones?
Jones.
Yes.
Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
Resolution 23-22 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 23-28, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance amending 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-108 to appropriate a total of $5,778.99 into the Police, Park, and Recreation and Director of Communications budgets.
Thank you. This is the second reading of Ordinance 23-28.
Ordinance number 23-30, introduced by Daniel Perry. Ordinance enacting Chapter 343 of Tiffin Codified Ordinances, allowing and regulating under speed and utility vehicle use within the city of Tiffin and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-30.
Ordinance number 23-31, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance amending 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-108 to appropriate a total of $34,360 into the Muni Court Probation Fund for the changes in insurance, dental, and vision since the budget was prepared last fall.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-31. Councilmember Reesner.
I move for the suspension of council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of Ordinance 23-31.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of council's three-reading rule and passage of, excuse me, of Ordinance 23-31. Is there a second? Councilmember Wilkins.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-31 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 23-32, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance amending 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-108 to appropriate a total of $13,827 into the Street Department budget.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-32.
Ordinance number 22-33, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance amending 2023 Budget Ordinance 22-108 to appropriate a total of $5,000 into the Capital Improvement Budget to replace detection loops at railroad crossings.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-33. Councilmember Reesner.
I move that city council suspends the three-reading rule and immediate passage of Ordinance 23-33.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of council's three-reading rule and passage of Ordinance 23-33. Is there a second? Councilmember Leffler.
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the first reading, and new to me. Which railroad crossings are we talking about? And I thought these are one-year-old? How could something one-year-old need repaired already?
Uh, City Administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. So these are the crossings for Nelson Street and Wall Street are the, the two, and Councilman Jones, you are absolutely correct. They are not in disrepair. They are not in need of replacing. However, per our agreement with CSX, when they do repair work, we have to replace the loops. We, we've looked for quotes, and the, the price that we initially thought, um, this is significantly lower, which we're, we're glad to see, but this is something that we need to consider as we continue to have the quiet zones, are that as, as work is done to those, to those intersections, that the replacement of those loop detection system is on the city of Tiffin to do. There's discussion, though, I've already had with the Finance Director, with the Superintendent of the Public Works Department, and the city engineer, about putting funds away each year so that we're prepared when these repairs happen, that, that we have money in place for those in the future.
Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, City Administrator, for that explanation, but I go across Wall Street on a daily basis. This is something coming in the near future, or something was already tore up and repaired, and I wasn't paying attention?
Sure. You may, you may notice that Wall Street i- is very much, and I, I would say, um, that was, that is an intersection that is in need of replay, of repairs, and so repairs will be happening there in the next few months.
Okay, call me difficult. Did the railroad tear up ties, or what causes damage that needs repaired? I'm not following something here.
Uh, I, I can't say exactly what, I, I think that that's just wear and tear. Normal wear and tear is what's causing them to need to make repairs to that. But yes, they will be, um, they'll be taking, uh, taking, fixing the, um, the intersection there, fixing the, the crossing, and that'll require them to do repaving at the crossing as well, which is why the loop detection systems will have to be replaced.
And it's just gonna be an annual thing? Every five years, every 10 years, this repairs are gonna be necessary?
Quite honestly, I wish we knew.
Okay.
Any other discussion, Councilmember?
I guess just for some clarification, is this a safety thing? This is something that has to be done for safety, and...
So, uh, CSX maintains their own intersections. There is not a lot that we can necessarily do as far as that goes. I will say that they are working with us in this process. We have asked for, for some lead time. Luckily, um, these, these loop detection systems were able to be done in a, a pretty quick fashion. The lead time was much less than we initially thought, and again, at a lower price point, obviously, we weren't expecting to spend $5,000 or, or the amount that they were, um, at this time. But, uh, the, they've been working with us to, to make sure this gets done. Yes, I think ostensibly, from, from their standpoint, it is a, it's a safety issue that they are taking care of at these two intersections.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to thank Councilmember Wilkins. I guess I was, had blinders on, as all I could see was $5,000, $5,000. Once you said safety and the detention loops, if someone's stuck in there, open the gate and gets out. So once you bring the safety into it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perry.
Just, uh, out of curiosity, I guess, for myself, say, they come back and they do more work on that intersection next year, we would have to then replace the detection loops again?
You're correct.
Seems wasteful to me to, I mean, especially if they're...
The other option is that we could forego the quiet zone.
What? Okay. So that was a agreement between CSX and, and the city.
That is how the agreement is written, correct.
And that's how it normally is with every town in, uh, CSX with quiet zones.
That is how our quiet zone agreement is written.
Okay, got it.
Any other discussion? All right, we will, uh, vote, first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
And then it's 23-33 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 23-34, introduced by Steve Leffler. Ordinance approving the Community Placemaking Grant and the Artistic Development Grant Programs to be administered by the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-34.
Ordinance number 23-35, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance amending the city's credit card policy to increase credit limits and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-35.
And that concludes the legislation.
Thank you. We are now under other business. Is there, uh, yes? Yes, Mayor?
Well, I'd like to start it off.
No, don't do it.
Councilmember Leffler. I am going to greatly miss your knowledge and leadership, and you've been a great asset to the city of Tiffin, and you will be greatly missed.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your support over the years, and it's quite scary to me that once you leave, I am the most seniority sitting here.
No, Brent still owns the seniority issue.
But we, we thank you for your service.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure.
If I take away long community planning, will you stay?
You know, probably the worst part about this is I gotta, you know, I've, I've, I've said goodbye to street sidewalks and sewers, and this was a good year to give it up.
No, I, I very much echo the mayor's comments. Ever since I've been on council, you've always provided a wise and a well-thought-out perspective on things, and so it's always been very nice to be able to look at you and have your supportive outlook on things and perspective on things to be able to lean on, but you're not gonna make me cry, so you'll be greatly missed, and I'll, I'll stop there.
Plus, he, he never wanted to be president pro tem, and he even stepped up into that one.
He didn't greatly appreciate it. Uh, Law Director.
Yeah, if I, I could say a couple words. I, I think, um, of all the council members that I've worked with, I probably have attended more meetings with you than any other council member because of our both long tenures, and, and I, I think I said this before when you left before and you came back, but I believe that you are the most prepared council member that I've ever worked with, and that really means a lot, because to me, what that means is that you take the job very seriously, you do the investigation, whether that means go walk around the city to find out, you know, what is happening, you talk to people, and you look beyond yourself, you try to understand the issue for the community, and you're, you're not looking at kind of a selfish kind of look at an issue. You're trying to understand what's the best interest of our community on any issue, and you're very thoughtful about that, and I appreciate your service a whole lot. You're a great example of what a council member should be.
Thank you. You're making me cry now.
Make you stink?
Councilmember Perry.
No, it's time to go. I was gonna say, I said all the nice stuff about him the last time he left, but I'll say, uh, he's like the Tom Brady retiree. He makes more money. No, Councilman Leffler's always been a, a joy to work with, even when we are on opposite sides of a vote. It's very well thought out. You know he took time to think about it. He always collects his thoughts, and it's pretty even keel, an aspect that I've always appreciated about him, so he'll be greatly missed, and I hope you the best. Thank you.
Councilmember Reesner.
Yeah, I echo all these comments. They're coming in new. Last year, I was, you were very gracious in helping mentor me, and I always thank you for that. Hopefully, I can be the next Steve Leffler for another council member.
You gotta shave your head.
I'll be working on it.
Councilmember Wilkins.
I just wanna thank you for, I came in at a really weird time on city council, and I think that we had a lot of discussions, and I just wanna thank you for your guidance and the example that you've set for all of us as city council members. As other people have said, you thoughtfully think of things and from a community perspective, and I think we all should consider that when we're considering other things. What would Steve think about this? So, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Over the last three and a half years, I've called Councilmember Leffler and bounced different subjects off him. He was very helpful as a mentor, if you will, and I told city council, maybe not, and I'll repeat it again, I met Councilmember Leffler picking up her 10 years ago, long before I was associated with city council. I was driving part-time for SCAT, dropped a lady off in a wheelchair over in the First Ward. She was complaining about mud in the alley behind her house. I looked up First Ward, Councilmember Leffler, called him. Within several days, he called me, "What are you doing Saturday? I got loaded a stone." Met him over there, leveled this off, so he's a doer and can get things done, so I've tried to model myself after that experience.
Really wasn't an alley. I tried to get the city to put the stone in, but it was not an alley.
Councilmember Spar.
We took care of her, though.
Okay, we did. We...
Thank you for your time on, on council, and I am remiss because I kept putting off, well, I should talk to Steve about that. I should, I should call Steve up and, and ask some general questions. No, there'll be time to do that. Well, you're still gonna get a phone call, probably, okay? I hope you'll take it. I hope you'll take it. But I should've done that earlier, and, and I didn't, uh, time just gets away, away from